Okay, good evening. Welcome to another special meeting of the Norwich Select Board. This is Wednesday, December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. My name is Marcia Callaway. I'm currently serving as Chair. I'm joined remotely tonight by Board members Mary Layton, Vice Chair, Pamela Smith, and Priscilla Vincent. We're expecting Roger Arnold. And also by Town Manager Brennan Duffy. This meeting is being held via Zoom only. The agenda and packet materials were distributed via the Norwich List Serve, and they're also available on the Town website under the Select Board tab. Brennan monitors admission to our Zoom platform, and we request that members of the public display their full name for admission, which has helped us to eliminate the so-called Zoom bombing interruptions of our meetings. If anyone is having difficulty getting into the meeting, or if your name is not full name, please feel free to contact a Select Board member now and let us know that you're trying to get in. As always, everyone attending or participating in a meeting must focus their remarks and wait their turn to speak. When recognized by the Chair, please speak clearly and loudly so that everyone can hear what is being said. For remote public questions or comments through Zoom, please raise your electronic hand to be recognized by the Chair before speaking. For questions or comments through the telephone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute after being recognized by the Chair. I will monitor the Zoom view to acknowledge participants who wish to speak, and we will reach everyone who wants to comment. Remember to direct all comments or questions to the Chair, not to other people either on the Board or in the remote audience. The order of speaking will generally be Select Board members, then members of the public participating remotely through Zoom. Consistent with our rules of procedure adopted in March of this year, the Chair may suggest commenters conclude their remarks within three minutes. Because we have staff presenters and two executive sessions with outside counsel tonight, public comments for items not on this agenda may be offered after those items conclude. We're now at the point of the agenda as our first topic, and as our agenda has evolved over the last week. And we have two executive sessions and possibly lengthy continued discussion if we choose to discuss the January twenty-fourth public sessions that have been proposed. I would now propose that we move the public comments section for items not on the agenda to right after item three. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with the suggested amendment? Pam, if we can take a motion first and then have discussion?
Well, before we get to that, I have some sad news that many of you may not have heard yet. We lost Jack Canden last night. And so I was hoping that perhaps before we embark on our agenda for tonight, maybe we could have a moment of silence in respect for all of the work that Jack did on behalf of this town.
Yes. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Pam. Jack will be sorely missed. We now have Roger Arnold with us, and we have a full complement of the Board. So is there a motion to approve the agenda with the suggested amendment?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Pam. Mary Layton, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Pam Smith?
Yes.
Roger Arnold?
Yes.
Priscilla Vincent?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that's unanimous. The first item on our agenda tonight is the budget presentations. Brennan, would you like to lead us into those discussions?
Okay, I'd be happy to. So as we are aware, this is our fifth budget meeting, probably going to be the most technical and in-depth as we try to put the full draft together that would be returning for ratification at the regular meeting on the thirteenth. And Joyce has in the packet included a number of slide decks and answered all of the questions that have come in through the first four meetings and some that have come in via email. So hopefully everyone had a chance to review those. And I think with the limited time, we won't try to go through each question and answer. But if there are still unanswered questions there from what was asked, we could take those in order as they come through the deck. And then we will delve into, I guess, the meat of this, which will be really trying to come up with some defined ideas of what this budget will be, and that will require motions from the Board or votes on certain things, I believe, to kind of get an idea of where the consensus is. And again, our hope is that at the end of this meeting, we have all of that defined for Joyce, who will then put this all back into kind of a final presentation. And we'll look at that on the thirteenth and hopefully approve it at that point. So with no further ado, I will turn this over to Joyce. Joyce, you are a co-host at this point. And if you can just remember to keep an eye on the waiting room in case we do have folks that are waiting that I'm not seeing here once you pull up your slides.
All right, so I'm hoping that you can see the slide deck for the questions and answers. So I'm going to go pretty speedily through this portion because I'm hoping that everybody's had a chance to look at these. And the slides that answer questions that directly ask the questions that I need for budgeting as far as the monetary things for the operating budget, I will refer back to those if we need to. But what I did is I tried to answer all the questions as Brennan said. So if you're missing something or still have further clarification that you'd like on these slides, I guess I'd rather do it that way rather than jumping through all of the slides. So I don't know, Marcia, is there a way we can just ask for questions on and slide numbers with any of those that might pertain?
Well, I think we could ask the Board members if they have particular questions and to get to everybody in case there are a lot. We'll do one question per person and then go back around. And then after we've done that, which hopefully won't take too long because a lot of those questions should have been answered in the deck. Then why don't we jump to, I think it was page forty-one or something that has the questions that need to be answered? Page forty-one of the packet.
Okay, of the budget report, then not the question and answer deck. I'm on the question and answer deck right now.
Well, again.
Whichever way you want.
Yeah, we can start with that so that the Board can ask any remaining questions. I think you did a tremendous job answering the questions that were asked. But let's open it up and see if the Board has any questions, and then we can jump to the ultimate questions. So Board members?
I'm going to jump in because somebody, and I can't remember who it was, had asked a question about some of these that said that they were reclassed, and what does that mean? Some of these that were reclassed were legal because during fiscal twenty-three is when we were separating out the professional fees and the legal fees because that's when we created that GL line. So reclassing just means it went from the professional fees line to a legal line.
Okay.
And other than that, I've not received other questions on this deck.
So Joyce, if I may, I'll just add to this. So I think one of the questions was what was booked to the line? And then is it necessary to keep that full eighteen thousand dollar amount that we had talked about in the preliminary budget?
Right.
What's that, Joyce?
We'll get to that on the budget part.
Okay, I'll leave it for that.
I was just explaining that somebody had asked me, what is reclass mean?
Yes. Understood.
I'm not seeing any questions. The only question I had from the whole thing was I didn't understand page thirty-two of the deck, which had a highlighted Planning Grant MAHHC grant for seventy-five hundred. I don't remember what that is.
Thirty-two. That must be the other deck. Because this one only has twenty-nine slides.
Yeah, it must be the other deck. Okay, wait till we get to that one.
Okay, so we'll get to that one then. Yep, so all right, let me share the other deck then. And we'll just jump into that. And then, like I said, if we have questions as we go through that, this is where the heart of the conversation needs to be for tonight.
So. So do any other Board members have any questions about this portion of the presentation? Great.
Okay, so I'm just going to jump in and get here again. I'm going to try to talk as little as I need to for the slide presentations to give more time for you folks to ask questions toward the end. So what we're looking at tonight is we're looking at the draft incorporated with the items that I had feedback and consensus on by departments and also Select Board directives. So as we proceed, we have remaining questions that need to be answered, and I've got those in the list and move it on. And where I got those remaining questions was actually from the slide deck. So I went through the slide deck, and anything that was dealing with the operating budget where there were still outstanding questions for what dollar amount should be in the budget, that's where I got the formulation of the questions to be addressed tonight. We're only going to be concerned with a portion of the surplus that is proposed to buy down taxes or infuse the, to get a better rate of increase. And so this slide is kind of explaining that here's the two parts that we've been discussing. And if we leave out the capital plan, that was the first part, but I've kind of moved past that for right now. So we're looking at two parts. So part one is the operating budget. Part two is the surplus from the prior years because there's different actions that need to be done for those two different portions. So tonight, the operating portion of the budget is what we need. And because that's what our estimated spends are for fiscal twenty-five, and it's what we use to set the tax rates. So it's, and we also have to remember that the expenses need to balance with the revenue for that same fiscal year. So this is where I'm talking about if we infuse a portion of that surplus to help with our revenue side, then we can have extra expenses because we're technically driving a deficit, but we're using part of that surplus as that deficit. And then when we talk about the surplus, we talk about the accumulation of prior year's surplus and deficits and the amounts that are needed to be reported to the voters for them. And that's why we have brought that up because I presented what we have for the surplus. So then we have to bring before the voters, do we want to use that money or do we want to save the money? If we want to use the money, we can move it to a designated fund by article, or we can put a portion of it into the operating budget as part of that revenue. And then the next screen, I wanted to actually explain this table a little bit more because there was a lot of questions that were coming through as far as thinking of the general fund balance unrestricted line, which is actually a GL account. So that name on that GL account is kind of a driving part of the confusion, I think, because it's not a designated fund. It's the cumulative balance of the pluses and minuses at the end of each budget year. So this chart, the first line you're looking at, that's the general fund balance or the surplus deficit fund balance. And by fund on this, I'm always talking about a GL account. That's where it is at the beginning of the year. The current year line shows the amount of activity surplus deficit that we had in that particular year. So you can see in fiscal year eighteen twenty-two, we had budget deficits, two point four in twenty eighteen and five hundred and twenty-one thousand in twenty twenty-two. But the other fiscal years, we actually had surpluses. And you can see that clearly identified in that current year line. And then the third line is the beginning, or balance at year end, excuse me. So the balance at year end is just adding together where we started, what our current year change was, and that's where we landed. So if you look at twenty-two, you can see we ended twenty-two at a surplus of seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. When we ended twenty-three, unaudited, we're at one point eight million dollars. So that one point eight million dollars is what we're looking to bring to the voters to say, okay, what we'd like to do for this money? How much of it do we want to use? For what purposes? Or how much of it do we want to save? So we'll talk about this more because I have another slide later that talks about this. But, and I actually have the same chart there. Budget summaries, these are the assumptions that I have in. So I currently have all my percentages and totals and everything, assuming we're going to put five hundred thousand of the surplus in. I do have my live workbook open tonight, so when we get to the end, I will share my live workbook with you so we can change these numbers in real time so that you can see what that looks like, both on the tax rate and for Fund fifty, which was another question that's pending. So right now, I'm showing Cruiser that we're purchasing one vehicle. So you'll see in the designated line, sixty-five thousand dollars in there, but nothing in the lease line. Lister's Office question was left open last week, so that's still up there. I left it as the FY twenty-four items until we have further direction on that. And then there was a question in the budget deck whether we should increase the culvert allocation amount to two fifty. So this budget is assuming that it is at one fifty, which is what Chris had asked for in that. This is the compilation of the outstanding questions. And as we go through the slide deck, we're going to be addressing each one of these. And I have slides that kind of address each one of these questions and give you more data information. And I am going to ask Marcia, as we get to those question slides, if we can get a vote so I can put what this dollar amount is into the budget. So when we get to the very end and we're looking at the tax rate, we can then say, okay, what have these changes done for our tax rates? And I can get new percentages and totals for you in live time. That will also give you the ability to figure out how much we need to allocate to Fund fifty, which is the unanticipated emergency fund because I have that in my live workbook, and that will be a moving piece as well. And then also, I have worked into my workbook how much surplus we want to put in, and that will help you, you'll see live what that does to the tax rate and increases for that, and also the budget increases. So. Overview of the percentages, I went through using the assumptions that are now in the books. And you can see we are now sitting at, without the monetary articles, a budget increase of fifteen point four five percent. And of that, five point five three is without the capital allocations we all know has increased. And of the five point five three, we are at five point one seven percent related to salaries and benefits. So that means the actual operating budget increase amount is point three six or basically a flat budget. Capital allocation increases account for nine point nine two percent of the total. So if we're looking to put surplus money in there, that buy down quote is really looking at addressing this nine point nine two percent increase for right now. Here are the percentages broken out, so you can see the changes, same slides as we had this time, but you can see that the dollar amounts and the changes for the current budget assumptions. Salary and benefits, the same thing. This is where I got all my figures for that summary tab that I had in there. And then you'll also see that each one of the budget summaries have been restated with a new thing. Some of them haven't moved much. Some of them have moved, like Recreation Department. We know we had changes there, so that's moved. But again, all of these summaries, I'm just going to kind of skip through unless there is something that somebody wants to go back and look at. Again, all of these summaries are in the live workbook. So if we change something that addresses any one of these lines, we can look at a new percentage and see what that fully lands at.
Are there any questions, Board members? Pam?
Yeah, I'm wondering on the salary line, has the childcare contribution tax been calculated as part of the increase for the cost of salaries? There's a new tax starting July one of next year?
No, we have used prior year taxes for that.
Okay, well, we do need to calculate for that tax because it will be imposed starting July one of next year.
July one of twenty-five or twenty-four.
Twenty-four, which is the twenty-five fiscal year. July one through June thirty twenty-five. So it will be imposed starting July one of next year. So it needs to be in the fiscal twenty-five calculations.
Okay.
And while you mentioned salaries, I did look again yesterday to see if the last posting to calculate the actual COLA was in there yet, and it's not. So I didn't change any of that stuff yet. It still fits at the three point eight four percent.
And isn't that something, Joyce, that we can address by how much we decide to ask the voters to leave in there in the general ledger for the unrestricted line so that if things go up and down?
It is, yes. Because that surplus deficit account is kind of like an overdraft on a checking account where you have one expense, it's more one month than what you thought it was. You kind of dip a little lower than what you wanted. So that having something in that surplus deficit account helps to kind of cushion that bounce. And also, I don't know if there are any things coming with the salary survey that we have pending or anything that's coming with anything else salary related.
Right.
Yeah, so there's a lot of things. So I think that leaving at three point eight four percent is wise at this point for that.
Okay.
But again, if you want me to put different amounts in there, a different COLA increase or whatever, I'm glad to do that for the next iteration. But leaving it at three point eight four, I think, is at least looking at what we feel it should be at for just a COLA increase and then life happens type of thing for the variances other than.
Well, the worry is that what we don't know, we're just guessing.
Right.
Priscilla? You're on.
And unmute. It's actually on the previous slide, and maybe I just should have paid better attention at a previous meeting, but it's under the Police Department. Their benefits are such an enormous percentage of salaries. Is that because police work is so dangerous? I mean, it just seems huge.
Well, if you look at benefit increases, everybody's benefits increased. And that's, it's driven by a couple of things. It's driven by the rates, but more, it's driven by what the plan is that the employee chooses and how much of the tax, town's portion of that is. So if we hire somebody that needs a family plan, that's going to cost the town more than if it's just an individual.
Okay.
So that's what's kind of driving that. Yeah, but if you look just at this screen, you can see it's not just the Police Department. It's the Fire Department, Department of Public Works. All of the benefits have increased significantly.
Oh, yeah, I know, and we can't control that. It just seems to.
Yeah, we can't control that because it's whatever plan they choose for health, dental, whatever. Yeah.
Whatever the insurers chose to charge to.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other Board member questions on this deck so far? Joyce, could you just tell me what the Planning Grant MAHHC is on page thirty-two? So it's back?
Are you doing slide numbers or page numbers?
Page.
Oh dear, I don't have page numbers.
All right, hold on.
Can you give me the name of the slide?
Yes, it is on your page two of the Town of Norwich Revenue Report. It's highlighted in pink.
Marcia, isn't that the historic preservation through the CLG?
I don't know.
I'm pretty sure that's what it is.
Well, there's also a line for historic preservation, so I'm not sure why there'd be two.
You're looking at revenue?
Budget projection fiscal year twenty-five, it's highlighted in pink, seventy-five hundred.
There's a planning grant.
Yeah.
Sorry, if it's a seventy-five hundred, I'm pretty sure it is.
Yeah, it's that Jones Circle Grant.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was.
Yep.
All right, any other questions, fellas?
I had one more question on the revenue side. We're projecting four thousand dollars in Tracy Hall rental fee, and I'm wondering if we're under construction, is that a realistic number to expect that will be generating any rental revenue? It's not a lot of money, but I just thought I'd ask the question.
Yeah, I don't think we would plan to be curtailing the revenue. You know, we're not under construction. We don't know what construction would be. We don't know when it would start. So I think four thousand's probably a safe number to go with for the budget.
Okay. Joyce?
All right, moving on to the first question that we have then. So the first question is, should the Town Administration Professional Services budget line item be reduced to ten thousand dollars? So you can see that it's actually sitting in there right now at eighteen thousand dollars, which is the same as what it was for fiscal twenty-four. And this question was posed in the question and answer slide deck. So on this slide, you can see I went through and I added the professional services plus the legal lines. So you can see them, and you can see that twenty-two, we had everything in professionals lines. Fiscal twenty-three is when we broke out the legal lines, so that's when we had those reclasses.
Okay, so I'll ask the Board. We can either, well, let's just take a straw poll. Pam, what do you want to do with this?
Well, I looked back at the question and answer slide, and it talks about greater good media ads, which we're no longer doing. It also talks about payroll for the minute taker, which I can't imagine that would equal eighteen thousand dollars. And the things that are in here for twenty twenty-three, I don't think we're doing anymore. The Behar Consulting, the Burgess Loss Prevention. I don't know what Voltrek is. So from what I see on this slide, it looks like a lot of these things will not be expenses going forward. So I would like to see us reduce that amount, probably down to the ten thousand that I had suggested before.
Voltrek, I believe, is the expense that we have for that charging station at Danin Wits.
Oh, okay, I have no idea how much that is. There's nothing here that talks about that for twenty twenty-four.
Okay, Priscilla, so Pam wants to go down, so she's for reducing it.
I think ten thousand is a reasonable number.
Yep, that was the question. All right, Priscilla?
I think ten thousand is reasonable also, and that was actually indicated at the, one of the very early slides said probably be fine at ten thousand, so yeah.
Can I, before you finish the straw poll, just let me add one more thing. So I did answer that thinking, well, yeah, that's possible that that one could be lowered just because it didn't seem like we had been spending up to that amount. Since then, we have had a little discussion about a website redesign, and I would think that that is something that could occur in fiscal year twenty-five. I don't know that it has to or that it will. But if it was to, I would think that that professional line of eighteen thousand dollars might be used for kind of the vendor costs of redesigning and re-launching a Town of Norwich website. So I've kind of reconsidered after thinking, well, yeah, ten thousand maybe is the number. I think right now I would say we might want to leave that at eighteen so we would have, you know, something in that fund that we could use to tap for that project.
Good idea.
I would support that only if we are assured that there will be an RFP and we start moving in that direction. Otherwise, I wouldn't support keeping the eighteen thousand dollar level.
Okay, Pam, remember to raise your hand so we can keep this moving. Mary?
I'm not sure. I like the idea of revamping our website. I don't have any idea of actually what that would cost. And I think other than that, I think that Pam's suggestion is reasonable, so I'd put it at ten.
Okay, and Roger?
A website will not cost eight grand, but also we should, it's not a huge cut. I think we should leave it at eighteen. I don't, we shouldn't assume that we're not going to need human resources consulting or any kind of training or that would go under professional services. or that would go under professional services. So uh, I would leave it because we will need it.
Yeah, I would leave it as well, but it stands unless somebody changes their mind, three to two. No changes? Okay, question number two.
So I'm sorry.
So.
Are I leaving at eighteen?
We're reducing it to ten.
Ten thousand, thank you. All right, updating my workbook. Kind of stay on track with this. Okay, question number two. Uh, what's the amount for the, to be budgeted for the tax expenditures?
Okay. Um, so just remind everybody what we're talking about here. This is about the abatements, and again, we're guessing that there might be um, a lot of people, but we don't know. Pam?
Um, looking at the twenty thirteen with forty, almost forty-nine thousand dollars is, is pretty scary. Um, I think I'd be more comfortable at this five-year average of twenty-one thousand for that line item.
Okay. Or twenty-one thousand. Um, let's see, Priscilla?
I was so confused by this slide and, and the little discussion we've had has helped me out. Thank you. Uh, I was mystified by some of the numbers. We came up with like forty-three hundred. So I think I'll agree with Pam, twenty-one thousand, two ninety-eight.
Okay. Um, and Mary?
I would also go with that figure.
Okay, Roger?
I don't think it's necessary, but since we won't use it, it'll be a way to ensure that we get more professional services that year.
Quite right, okay. Um, I'm, I'm agreeing with Roger again. It's three to two. We're reducing that or increasing that to the five-year average, twenty-one thousand, two hundred ninety-eight dollars, and I don't know if we have to do nineteen cents, but.
I can leave the nineteen cents out.
Okay. Two hundred ninety-eight.
Twenty-one, two ninety-eight.
Yep. Okay.
All right. And then the lister's office is the next question.
Okay, um, so we had left it that the, we left it as it was for twenty-four because there was no decision last week. Um, the requested amount and the um, budgeted amount are really, I believe, about the same. The issue is really whether it's done in wages or stipend. I've sent the question off to council, and I'm expecting that we'll have some answer next week. So based on that, if we went forward with the budget as is, there would be money to do whatever is recommended and we decide to do in either direction. So um, Roger, I'll start with you this time. What do you think? Any changes?
I mean, I, I would not change it back to hourly. I mean, the, the original critique of the hourly wage was that it didn't stay within budget, and it costs an exorbitant amount. And so by having a salaried position, you would ensure that the work can be done, subject to a manager, subject to a job description. And if it's just hourly wages by an elected office, we have no way of knowing that that line item will be made accountable. And because the reporting structure, elected offices has never been made clear and transparent to anyone, we have no idea how much that money will actually cost the town. So um, I don't, I have no idea why we're changing it.
There's, there's also some other um, questions that I think need to be answered about the legal requirements for hourly versus stipend and the fact that um, the FLSA doesn't apply to elected officials, but we're waiting for counsel to weigh in on that. And I did look back, um, we had a discussion last week about the minutes. Well, about prior meetings, and so I found the minutes of twelve fourteen twenty-two where we were discussing budgets, and the, the issue was um, the listers asking for the stipend plus the salary for the administrative or assist, assistant position to be combined into one line item, and that wasn't approved. And then it was September thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, when the board discussed what Roger was remembering about um, you know, what was going to happen with that office. And so it was just represented that the Board of Listers would be able to work effectively with the current contract assessor, and everything stayed the same. Um, all right, Mary, I'm working backwards this time.
I'm still really confused by this entire conversation. I'm assuming that if I heard you correctly, Marsha, in either, no matter how we structure this, we're talking about the same amount as far as a line item?
Well, it looks like that from here, but Roger makes a good point about the hourly wage.
So if it was set as a line item with uh, an amount, uh, we would know, we would know if it was overspent. You know, because the amount would be set as a line item.
Well, I think, I think it depends on what we hear from council about um, how, what we're allowed to do.
Right, so I don't know how I can, I don't really know if I can answer tonight. I'm still I'm confused about the structure as well as the amount and what's allowable, what's not. Um, it's not, it doesn't seem to me to be a very coherent uh, plan. It has not seemed that way. Uh, but I do think they need to get the work done. So if there's a way to wait for council's input, I would like to do that.
Okay. Um, I'm certainly in favor of that. Um.
Mar, Marsha, could I just jump in real quick? So, so I think the question for today is really on, on the budget is just the number. And, and the discussion about how this gets structured is really one that can happen at a future date. So if that expedites the decision, you know, really, we're talking about a, a small difference in a proposal there, and uh, I, I think we could approve either one of those just to move this budget forward and then have time to go back and look at the uh, the structuring and the wage scale and stipend versus hourly. You know, that's, that could be a whole separate policy question that we could have, but not necessarily tonight.
So Joyce, what you're seeing is.
Yeah, so, yeah, so what I was thinking, if I look at the total for these columns that are in the FY twenty-four budget, we had budgeted a total for the stipend, the assessing clerk wage and the professional services, it came to sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. What currently stands in the top screen for the FY twenty-five um, with, using the same line items would be a total of fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. And that's because the assessor services were reduced. Um, and the, the bottom snapshot is looking for a total of sixty-one thousand, five hundred, ten dollars. Big, so it's an actual increase it from the wages and the stipend from what was budgeted in twenty-four or what the top shot shows for twenty-five.
Can you give me that last number one more time?
Sure, the bottom screen, the total is sixty-one thousand, five hundred, ten dollars. And my recommendation would be to leave it as it is until we can hear back from the um, the legal counsel on this, just to make sure that we've got all of the dots drawn or dotted and Ts crossed. Um, the dollar amount we're talking about for variance is not large. Um, so here again, is that part of the movement of the surplus deficit at, um, at the end of the year? I don't know.
So when you say leave it as is, the number that you're talking about is, just to be clear?
The, the top line on the screen. So the FY twenty-five budget request for forty-five hundred dollars for the lister stipend, assessing clerk wage at twenty-seven thousand, those two are both the same as they were for fiscal twenty-four budget. And then the professional assessor services at twenty-five thousand, which is what the lister's office requested for that because they said that they were going to have lower rate because they're not paying for driving and travel time.
Okay, so um.
Set to six, seven thousand, five hundred?
That is fifty-six thousand, five.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Mary, are you comfortable with that number?
Yes.
Roger, are you comfortable with that number?
Um, yes, I mean, the number doesn't necessarily reflect the facts that I want to see, but like, the number itself is fine.
Okay. Um, really, right now, we're talking about a number.
Well, I mean, even that number, like, what if they, what if we have an, an assessor who has, you know, part of their fee structure, you know, funds that um, funds that require travel time and, you know, whatever what was cut in order to pay the listers more. You know, I just think like, you know, this is, this is a completely restructuring of the department, and it is um, smoke and mirrors to say that it's just about money. But yes, I support funding the, the department, even though it's also not that.
Okay, well, I think we have to hold in abeyance the structure until we hear from, and I'm talking about wages versus stipends, um, until we hear from the council.
Yes, no, I understand. I, I mean, uh, I, the amount, I guess, sounds right.
Okay. Um, Pam, do you support fifty-six, five hundred?
No, I do not. And I, I think that we need to look at the overall budget that the listers have requested here. We're, we're kind of cherry picking which numbers we like. Well, we like the forty-five hundred, we like the twenty-seven thousand, and since they're only asking for twenty-five thousand for the professional assessor services, let's take that because it's lower than thirty-six thousand. I, I'm not for cherry picking anything. Their overall budget is lower this year than last, and as far as I'm concerned, I'm fine with their bottom number. That's, that's the only number I think we should be looking at. We shouldn't be looking at line items. We said we weren't going to do that.
We're, we're trying to come up with a, a number overall.
Right, and the number is like a hundred and seven thousand for the department as opposed to a hundred and twelve thousand last year. So you said you weren't going to go line item by line item, and here you are going line item by line item. I don't understand why you're doing this to only the listers.
Because this is a, a change that we're trying to, to figure out.
Why don't we just put the whole change off until next week when we have an answer from the attorneys, and then we can look at this budget?
Okay, point of order, point of order. It was I who was doing that, and in fairness to Marsha, it was her that was getting us back to the question. So I think, I think everyone agrees.
She asked my, she asked me my opinion. I was giving it, and my opinion is.
You've done it.
These are elected officials. They have come in with a lower overall budget, and I think that's the number that we need to honor.
Okay, we've heard, we've heard that.
Items.
Thank you. We've heard that. Priscilla?
Yeah, I had done the math too, and the, the bottom figure of sixty-one thousand, five hundred and ten there is lower than their current budget of this year. So I think we would be safe to go with that number. And I also think we need to remember that the listers are elected officials as we are, and I think they should be allowed to run their own show. I don't think it's really the select board's job to go and run the lister's office, but we can have that discussion after we talk to council. But in the meantime, I would say go with the one on the bottom, which has, by the way, no stipend um, and wages. So sixty-one thousand, five ten, it's my number.
Okay, let me just make it clear that the, the job of the select board is to fund things. If the select board didn't fund a lister's office, we couldn't have a lister's office. So, but once we have funded something, then depending upon who they are, they get to run the show. The problem that has been thrown into the, the issue here is that there are laws about wages versus stipends and elected officials versus employees. And the waters have been muddied, and we're waiting to hear from council, and that's all we need for tonight. So um, at this stage, um, I'll go with what's recommended for fiscal year twenty-five, which is the fifty-six, five hundred, and I would make it clear that, you know, this is what we're using to come up with a budget tonight. If we hear something radically, um, you know, I don't know what, from council, then we still have next week where we're finalizing the budget. So at this stage, the decision would be fifty-six, five hundred. And um, Pam, one last comment, but you know, we're just going through this, and again, you've told us your position, so unless it's.
No, I have a question.
Okay.
If council supports the listers going to hourly, is this something that can be reconsidered in terms of the amounts that we're looking at here on this budget?
I don't think it would be the council would say we support that. It would be council saying it's legally okay if you want.
Well, the same, yeah, I mean that.
It's a distinction.
If council says that what the listers have requested is legally allowable, would this board be willing to come back and look at these numbers again and seriously consider the budget as submitted by the listers?
Well, ask the board. I mean, that's why we're having the discussion with council, but um, and I understand from Joyce and from Brennan that we're going to be looking at this for finalizing next week. Brennan?
If I may, I, I also just want to point out that we're talking about a five thousand dollar difference here between these two numbers. And there is a lot of movement within a, a large budget that we're proposing here. So the fact that this could be changed and it could go up five thousand dollars after we've had council's review and approval. If that's the decision of the board, that's really not going to make a huge difference here. So I think tonight we could just move forward with one of those numbers and um, be good.
Okay. I think um, for our purposes, it's fifty-six, five hundred for the moment. Uh, Cheryl, if you have something that you wanted to add? Cheryl Lindberg?
Hi, yes, Marsha. Um, I just wanted to ask you on the matter of the uh, council's opinion. Um, if, if the VLCT wages and benefits booklet shows the majority of listers are paid by the hour, what, what piece to your question is, is it going to be different than what we can see in a wage and benefits report already?
If I knew that, I wouldn't have had to ask them, so we'll have to wait. Okay, we'll, we'll move on to the next question.
Okay, so next I have the uh, fund summaries that are in here. Uh, and again, this is just our restating um, everything that was in there in previous slides with the new budget assumptions. Um, so most of these, again, have not changed. Um, capital fund requests. Close this, see that. And then the non-capital funds. And then um, this is your first look at the fund balance report. Um, this shows June thirtieth unaudited totals for each fund. And I went ahead and I put our new fund types in there so we can start getting used to seeing those. Here's our projected balance at June thirtieth, uh, what the allocations are according to the assumptions right now. Our expected spend according to the capital plan for the capital funds, and then here's our projected balance. And then I have in the far column on the right, um, what we're expecting to spend uh, for that fiscal twenty-five expenses. Um, so I won't dwell on that because I'm, I know you can all read that. Same thing here. This is all of the non-capital funds, the same type of thing. Um, and then the next slide, I um, wanted to talk about the fund balance. And I think the next one is actually talking about twenty-fifty. Got to get my pages turned. Um, so this was the slide I referenced when we were back on slide five. It's the second one that we're talking about general funds and the surplus. So these four funds are listed as general funds, and you can see that in the fund type column. And this is what you'll see on the audit. So when the audit comes out and it talks about funds that are not included in us, the committed funds, this is the funds that they're talking about. And we've had a lot of questions about fund fifty. Fund fifty is that unexpected or in anticipated uh, expenses and emergency reserve. So here's the current balance on that, and when I get to the end, I have another slide that actually gives you more data about fund fifty. I have that worked into my workbook, so as we change the budget items, that calculation of uh, the percentage to get us to twelve to sixteen percent is going to be in there. And then I also put on the very bottom that surplus balance that we talked about back a few slides ago. Um, just with a, just some explanation about this is surplus money. It's a GL account as opposed to those named fund accounts that are at the general fund. Uh, but all of it's talking about general. Uh, but all of it's talking about general fund money. It's just different parts of the general fund.
So the, the question is, shall we allocate more money to Fund Fifty?
Right, and we're going to get to that later on, because I want you to be able to see the total budget before you come up with that amount. But I just wanted to, to give you an explanation. Here's the fund balances at the top, and here's the surplus money at the bottom. Okay? So here's your question, uh, police cruisers. Um, so police cruisers I put in this section because we're talking about allocation money. Um, as you can see in the, in the snapshots down here, right now, it's in the budget in this first snapshot where we are designating sixty-five-thousand dollars, which would be enough to purchase one cruiser in fiscal twenty-five. The other question would be, do we want to go to option two and lease two equipment? Uh, two vehicles, and then we can kind of progress through. That'll be a five-year lease, so we have twenty-seven-thousand dollars for five years that would get us two vehicles. And then we would still have to continue to fund the designated fund for future replacements going five years out. So I do have, uh, before we ask that question, a couple more screens for this. So, um, this is if we were doing a capital lease for two cruisers, and I had the capital lease information in the, uh, question and answer slide. These, uh, Matt had actually gone and gotten two different quotes, so got one from Ford Credit and one from Mascoma Bank. Both of them are for the same total purchase, one marked cruiser and one unmarked cruiser for total purchase one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Ford Credit, you can see the interest is at nine-point-three-nine percent, while Mascoma's interest is at five-point-seven-oh. Um, annual payments, um, are both right around twenty-seven thousand. Interest is, both of them are twenty to twenty-two thousand dollars. And the total pay you can see is one-thirty-five versus one-thirty-three. And you ca-, the question that, um, Matt asked me is why is the interest so high in the first one and so low in the second one? But there's not a big change in the rate of interest that's paid. And I didn't crunch all the numbers, but that usually has to do with the fact of whether it's a simple interest or a compound interest and how often that interest is compounded. Because when you write a capital lease, you can do an annual payment, you could do a quarterly payment, you could do a monthly payment, so that would all be spelled out in the contract. Um, so those are just kind of nuances, but this is the basic information. Basically, you're looking at paying twenty-seven thousand dollars a year for five years to get two cruisers. Interest over the life alone, you're going to expect to pay twenty-two thousand dollars there. And then if we look at the second part of this, if we look at what does this look like in our capital plan? If we lease those two cruisers, you can see on the two thousand thirteen Ford Interceptor sedan, um, that there's one that's currently deadline. You can see I've got five years of making payments of twenty-seven thousand dollars. And you can see the allocations going in the gold line of thirty-five thousand dollars up until twenty-twenty-eight, when we would need to put sixty thousand dollars in there to be able to start purchasing on a five-year schedule. And that would kind of work with that capital plan. Um, so that's kind of what I'm showing here, um. And if we, the last bullet here is if we actually went to the leasing option, it's only going to change the budget bottom, you know, total by three thousand dollars. And it's a four-one-hundredths of a percent, so it's not a big change to do it either way. So again, it's just a question of what is the board looking for? How quickly do we need to get that? Equipment on site and et cetera, et cetera. So then we're back to the question, um, two questions actually. What will we allocate to Fund Eleven, which is the police cruiser fund? And number two, will we enter into a lease or purchase of the two vehicles? So Marcia, you're up.
Okay, um, so I see, well, let's start, I seem Chief Romeo, but we'll, um, I guess I'll hold off on getting to him. We'll, I'm, I'm, I'll hold off. Roger, would you start off?
Uh, yes, so, um, did the lease, uh, in the research for lease agreements, what is, uh, said about the commitment to repairs? Do, are they repaired, um, for the duration of the lease? You know, is it really three thousand dollars more if we lose the repair costs on them?
Um, I think that Matt can answer that question.
Um, yes, I'm, uh, I'm sorry, ma'am chair. Um, I am not sure the exact cost, but on the, uh, Ford lease, uh, repairs and maintenance were included. Um, I asked them to include it on the Mascoma lease, but I have substantially less documentation uh, from them. I just didn't know how, how far to chase this, um, this idea.
Okay. Roger, do you, did that answer it for you? You have a follow-up?
Yes, and then my only other question is, um, I think the two thousand seventeen one is, is needed to be replaced if we assume that a hundred thousand miles and not a hundred and thirty thousand miles is uh, replacement case. Why are we replace, why are we talking about leasing two when only one is slated to be replaced?
Chief, can you answer that?
Sure, so, um, just to recall, we, we, we dropped the twenty, uh, we dropped one twenty-thirteen interceptor. We deadline the second one. It's currently in the process of being sold. The twenty-seventeen cruiser would be the next one out. And we would expect that to go as soon as we got the appropriate number of vehicles in the fleet to sustain us. I would say this, I, I pitched the lease item, I, the lease idea is a bridge. Um, ultimately, if we are fully staffed and we, um, uh, have all the vehicles that we need to have, we're replacing one every year or so. And that's kind of the other concern and the other idea behind leasing two is that the two that we have outlined to lease this year, if we are still able to get them, are twenty-twenty-threes at twenty-twenty-three prices. Immediately with the twenty-twenty-four model year, the base price goes up fourteen thousand dollars per unit. We do not know what the twenty-twenty-five model year is going to go up. And, uh, the interceptors, if we go back to them, we don't see one of those until the end of calendar twenty-five.
We, um, can we please just all have clarity on what we have and rather than claims of what we need? We have a two, so we have a two thousand twenty-three car, we have a two thousand twenty-two car, we have a two thousand seventeen car as their fourth car?
We have a twenty-twenty-three interceptor, a twenty-twenty interceptor, a twenty-seventeen interceptor, and the RAV four. I honestly don't know what year it is. Twenty-twenty-two RAV four.
Okay, and we have at the moment.
We have four cars.
Four cars and.
Plus a Devon, yes.
Okay, and, um, so these two cars would go to who?
These two cars would.
Or replace what?
These two cars would go into the fleet. I would anticipate the twenty-seventeen could go out the door. Provided we could keep the twenty-twenty on the road longer than thirty days.
Twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-two?
The, the twenty-twenty, uh, we are, since I've been here, we haven't been able to keep it on the road more than thirty days.
It's a hybrid that needs fixing all the time, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we actually have a twenty, do we have a twenty-twenty-three? We don't.
We do.
We do, so we have a twenty.
We have a twenty-twenty and a twenty-twenty-three hybrid interceptor.
Okay.
We have a twenty-twenty-two RAV four. And we have a twenty-seventeen.
So, so my point, you know, everyone is, why are we talking about anything other than the twenty-seventeen? I can appreciate that the twenty-twenty has some problems. But, you know, how are, you know, who is evaluating these problems, right? And then how does a, a lemon, if you will, affect our replacement schedule? So I'm, I'm just, I think my, like, final rhetorical point, and certainly this is just due to, um, not consistent staffing, uh, which, you know, which is, you know, we're seeing sort of the effects of that. I am so exhausted. I'm sure everyone is so exhausted of talking about a replacement schedule for these cars every year. What, what do we have? What is a replacement schedule? And can we please just be committed to that? So in my mind, we should probably be replacing the twenty-seventeen. And if we lease that, if it includes repairs, that seems like we could lease it, and it takes, uh, that would be a good model to try. But, you know, I don't, I don't know why we're talking about anything other than that.
So, all right, Roger, you would replace one car with one lease?
Right, well, because in my mind, that's what a replacement, that, that's what's called for in a replacement schedule. I don't know anything, like, I can appreciate that the twenty-twenty has problems, but I, I, maybe we should just have an agenda item about that, like, I don't, I don't know why we're, I don't know why we replace a three-year-old car.
You mean the Ford Explorer that needs all the work?
The twenty-twenty car, yeah.
Yeah, all right, so Rogers for leasing one car. Uh, Priscilla?
I'd be in favor of, of leasing the two cars, and we can get them right away and get them at a better price than if we delay and dawdle around. So I replaced the, yeah, the hy-, the Ford Hybrid Explorer in the, in the twenty-seventeen, yeah.
Okay, Mary?
I would, I would lease the two cars. I think that, um, we, it sounds like we do have a lemon in that twenty-twenty uh, hybrid, and, uh, we need functionality. So I don't know if it could be sold to recoup some of the cost, but I would vote for two leases.
Okay, um, Pam, I can't see you, but where, I think you're here. There you are.
I, yeah, I'm here. Um, well, I share some of Roger's concerns. I didn't understand why the request for two. Um, when I look at the list of vehicles, and I don't know how many we need, uh, if we have four people in the department, we probably need four vehicles. But after hearing about the problems with the twenty-twenty, maybe if we could sell that and sell the twenty-seventeen, then it would make sense to replace two vehicles.
So lease two vehicles?
I, I don't know. I, I struggle with this, um, annual payment thing. I'm not sure whether we're better off making payments more frequently, if that would reduce the overall cost. Or, because we haven't been presented with the various payment options, sometimes paying annually, uh, because there's a longer time between payments, the interest co-, you know, computation tends to increase. So, I, I'm, I don't know if I'm in favor of, of leasing, um.
So do you want to buy two cars?
Huh?
Do you want to buy two cars?
I don't know. I don't have enough information to make a decision whether lease or purchase is the correct path to take. But if we're getting rid of this twenty-twenty and the twenty-seventeen, then we would need two vehicles. The question is, uh, is that the plan to get rid of those two and bought and bring in two more vehicles either through lease or purchase? And I would want more information about those options and what they cost before I made a decision on whether I supported lease or purchase.
Okay, so do you want to abstain on this straw poll?
I'm, I think I'm in favor of two vehicles. I just don't know which way to go in terms of how to bring them in financially.
All right, uh, I'm going to say two leased vehicles. I'm in favor of that. And so that gives us, um, a majority for two leased vehicles. All right, um.
What are we leasing? What are the cars? Are they Chevy Tahos?
Looks like it. Is that true, uh, chief?
That's what's currently spec'd.
And are we getting rid of the other two, the twenty-twenty and the twenty-seventeen with these new Tahos coming in?
I would definitely, um, suggest getting rid of the twenty-twenty. Um, I honestly would prefer to hold on to the seventeen until we get the next replacement in, which should be in fiscal twenty-six. And to, um, uh, Selectman Arnold's question about that, or, or at least the question I perceive he has about it. Every time I walk out into the parking lot, I can crank the twenty-seventeen and go to a call. And I don't have that same confidence in the twenty-twenty.
Okay, thank you.
I think as Pam said, you have plenty of cars to choose from currently, right, unfortunately?
Um, no, sir, we, we, we have the number, well, we have one extra vehicle now, because we only have three officers working.
Right, that's why I said unfortunately.
All right, Stuart, what?
So the second part of the question then, or the actual person, and how much to allocate. So if we're going to put in into our budget twenty-seven thousand dollars to lease two vehicles, are we going to drop the, uh, go with a second screen or shot that we're going to put thirty-five thousand into the cruiser fund? For future replacements?
Okay, um, let's start with Priscilla. How much to put away?
That, I think that would be wise, although I'm probably getting very extravagant here. I think it would be wise to put the thirty-five thousand in, yes.
Thirty-five thousand in the allocation, okay, um. Mary, Leighton?
I'd go with the thirty-five thousand.
Okay. And Roger?
What is the question? We need twenty-seven thousand to lease two cruisers, but we're putting in thirty-five?
This is to, um, save up for a, a car in the future. I mean, it seems to me, who knows? We may think this works so well. We don't buy cars in the future. I have no idea what'll happen. Um, and that might be just surplus money that, you know, we have.
If it costs to, if it, in my mind, if it costs twenty-seven thousand to lease two cruisers, which is one car that I believe that we need, and certainly more cars than we have staff, then twenty-seven thousand is appropriate.
So you would put no money in the, um, capital, the designated fund eleven?
Well, it's, it's the, the question is twenty-seven versus thirty-five. Is that not the question?
Two questions. The one question is, do you want to lease or purchase? I'm sorry, do you, do you want us to explain it?
What is the question? I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, if you can look at her screen, there's two questions, and we're trying to do number one right now.
I'm sorry, I've, I've lost the plot.
Okay, the plot is we were going to have Fund Eleven where we save up for future purchases. Do we want to save anything for a future purchase of a car? Number two was, are we going to right now enter into a lease for the purchase of, well, it says lease for purchase, but.
If we're, if we're going to lease two cars, why would we need in this fiscal year anyway to put money for purchasing of cars? Do people, uh, does anyone understand, like, what are?
I understand.
I think people just want to, you know, appear to be supportive, which, I, to be clear, I am, which is what, like, but like, I think we should like talk with a lo-, in order, we should talk with a level of specificity and knowledge, but otherwise it's just sentiment and that is not useful to anyone. So if we're, if we're leasing two cars, then at this fiscal year, I don't think we need to squirrel away funds. If, if I'm understanding the question, and I might not be.
I think it's for a future purchase for the other cars, but.
Yeah, I don't think we need to do that, right, this fiscal year.
So Roger says no. Um, I think that leaves Pam.
Yeah, I'm looking at this saying, if we can get two cars for tw- twenty-seven thousand dollars a year, what can we get for thirty-five thousand dollars a year in a lease? Probably another two cars. So if we're going to be going with a leasing model, then why are we squirreling money away for future purchases? We'll just budget for more leases when we need to do more leases.
Okay, so Pam is a no. Um, and may I ask a question, Joyce, before I answer?
Sure.
Okay, um, does Fund Eleven allow us to use that money to lease if we decide to instead of purchase in the future?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does, because, um, these are capital leases. You're buying a capital piece of equipment. Um, so this fund is for capital equipment, so it does qualify as a purchase of capital equipment. And one of the things that makes a capital lease a capital, a lease is not only, um, does it buy capital equipment, but it usually has a buyout option. So for a dollar, you can buy out this vehicle and you can own it. So we pay for it and lease it or, um, for five years, but then we pay a dollar, we can keep it for another two years at no cost.
Okay.
Well, that's just the cost to lease electric vehicles if we wanted to have further conversations.
I don't know that anybody's looked into that point at this point.
Because leasing also provides, um, that kind of flexibility, or, or saving for leasing provides for that kind of flexibility and innovation and.
And, yeah, and I would think that that would be an option. Um, I think it would need more research, because I don't know what leasing options would be available for hybrids that are not proven to be, um, reliable police vehicles at this point, because they're, um, and Matt talked about that a couple of weeks ago when he presented that, um, that, you know, that just need a little bit more, um, uh, what do we, it's one of say, exploration or development of the models to make them more reliable for police services.
Okay. So I'll cast my, uh, straw vote, which is for saving the $35,000 for the future, because it seems to me at any point there could be improvements and, you know, miraculously, the electric vehicles might be more useful, any number of things could happen, but I think saving is always good. All right, so that one passes, it would be, we will put away $35,000 for in Fund 11. Now, we have a comment by Pam.
Yeah, um, Joyce mentioned purchasing the, the vehicle at the end of the lease for a dollar. Is that in the lease agreements that are being considered? I, I haven't seen them, so I, I just want to make sure that that really is a, a, an option at the end of the five-year lease.
Well, I don't know that Matt's gone that far. He's, but Matt, do you have an answer?
It is, uh, they're also both have non-funding clauses and no prepayment penalties.
Thank you. Um, and I see Linda Gray has her hand up.
Hi, thank you very much. And I just, you won't be surprised to hear me say this, but I, um, I'm disappointed at, uh, but, but I understand that, I'm disappointed at switching away from a hybrid to a, a combustion, uh, vehicle, and I understand, um, but if there are staff problems with it, that, that, you know, you need to respond to that, but I would very strongly urge the select board. This, this reminds me similar to, it's about two years ago when you had the same kind of decision relating to, uh, the possibility of switching to an electric mower. And you went with, uh, what the staff, the, the, the equipment that the staff recommended and wanted to work with. And that seemed appropriate, but you also had, you know, a very firm commitment to switching over as soon as something that was satisfactory was available. And so I'd like to see you guys take the same approach with this. Um, I think it's very important, and if you look back, um, like, switching to hybrid or electric vehicles is a very strong recommendation from the Article 36 Task Force. And so I think you should keep those recommendations in mind as you make your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. I, I can say, I think we're all trying to do that, and we're also trying to listen to the departments, so it's, it's tough. Okay, um, is that all for that, Joyce?
Yes, I have my two answers. We're going with this bottom one.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, let's see, what's next? Question, shall we allocate for the new culvert fund? So this is one of the questions that had come up, um, should we up the amount in this fund to 250,000 instead of 150? So I did a little bit of, um, number crunching for you on this one. And you can see what it does for the bottom line. Um, it greatly infu- it increases the total budget amount by that $100,000.
Thank you. Um, I had asked that question because I'm just so concerned about culverts and whether, you know, we should be more proactive, because the weather is, um, the climate is getting worse and the water is getting more frequent. I mean, we could even, I heard tonight, we could even have floods on, on Sunday. But if, you know, this might be a step too far at the moment, especially since sometimes grants are available, et cetera. So even though I'm the one that mentioned this, I'm not sure that I'm wedded to it, but I'll, I'll listen to other people. Uh, Priscilla, you're at the top of my screen. What do you think?
Uh, well, I was wondering when I looked at this, whether there might be any FEMA funds that would come in to augment it. I would, I, I, I don't know, but even without knowing that, I'd be inclined to keep it at the 150 and not up it.
Okay. Thank you. Mary?
I think it's important to keep the, up with the, uh, upgrading of culverts to let the water flow through, but I also trust Chris Kaufman to come up with a reasonable number. So I, I think I would not add $100,000 without input from Chris that it's needed.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Pam, I think you're next.
Yeah, um, this 150,000 would be coming out of the surplus funds, right?
Joyce?
No, this is an allocation, just like any other fund would be. This is.
Well, you're allocating to a fund that does not exist, that would have to have voter approval. So it has to come out of the undesignated fund, because you have to take this to the voters and ask them, would they like to create this fund, and would they like to put $150,000 in it?
But it might be.
We did this a couple of years ago with the unanticipated expense, an emergency fund, and also the Operational Performance and Development Fund. There was a two-part um, article on the town warrant. Do you want to create this and do you want to fund it? So this, this money does not is not part of the operational budget. We can't say, here's a fund and we're putting money in it because this fund does not exist.
Right, but.
It doesn't exist until the voters approve it.
Right, but it'll be funded with new tax money when they do approve it, right? I mean.
So like any other fund, I mean, we'd have to be getting people to approve the budget. And if they approve the budget, because it's not line by line, they approve this too.
Um, but you haven't, you haven't created this fund. The voters have to approve the fund. That is statute.
It's not a design, it's not a reserve fund. It's a designated fund. Joyce, I turn it.
It's the same thing.
It's the same thing.
The voters have to approve creating this fund, just like they've approved the Fund 50, Fund 51, and all the others. It has to go to the voters.
Yes, and I, so I'll jump in. Yes, Pam is right that we do have to go to the voters to, with an article to ask them to create this fund. And a part of that would be, um, funding the fund, once we have that created. Um, the way that that was put into the budget two years ago, um, is it was put into the section of the budget down where the, uh, monetary articles are. Um, so it was included in the total overall budget, but it was a vote item, just like giving to the library or to the Lions Club would be. So that way it was shown in the budget, just not in the department that that budget was gonna be managed by.
So Pam, do you say yes or no?
I support 150 if the voters approve it.
Okay. And I say, uh, no, just keep it at 150. So the decision is keep it at 150 as requested by the, uh, department. And I think Cheryl Lindberg has a question? All right, not a question, a comment?
Yes, hi, Marcia. Thanks. Uh, yeah, uh, the, the fund has not been created, therefore it's not impacting your budget discussions. Um, what I would think that you would do at town meeting is to ask for this, and when you're talking about the article, then reflect on what the cost would be and what it would do to the budget in total, but this shouldn't be part of your budget, uh, currently.
Joyce, do you want to sum up? Or we all set?
Uh, I, I am all set. It's, it's either in the budget in the department, or it's in the budget at the bottom where the capital, or the, uh, monetary articles are, so that the townsfolk can see what the entire budget would be. But it does need to go on an article to create that fund, so it will need to be presented to the voters.
Okay. Very good.
So I'm, I'm a little confused here, if I might jump in and ask a question.
Go ahead.
So we, we put the, the question to the voters, do you want to create this fund? And let's say the voters say, no, we, we don't want this as a separate fund. How does that impact the budget if you budgeted 150 for a fund that isn't approved?
I would create the article all at once. So create this fund and put it initially funded at that dollar amount.
Then that's what I was saying originally, and this is a discussion for the uh, the, uh, reserve, I mean, the surplus that we said we'd have with the voters in January. It's coming out of that money.
No, I, this is new, this would be raised with new tax money. Like, that's, like, I don't understand what the problem is.
Right, so, uh, when we get to the budget and I show you my budget workbook, I'll show you that. I'm just gonna leave it right now at 150,000. We're not gonna increase it, so that answers this one question.
Good.
Okay.
Next.
Uh, so the next question is the amount that we would allocate to Fund 50, and this one, the purpose of this fund says that we are supposed to fund it every year uh, between 12 and 16%. So right now, the fund balance is 761, or that's what it's projected to be at 624. Uh, without interest, the current budget assumptions are 6.3. So you can see the screen on the bottom, 12% would be 600, or 765,000, 16% would be 1 million. Um, so I don't want an answer on this one yet, because I want to, actually, I can tell you what the new numbers are, since we've got that. So, um, the current operating budget is at 6,381,233. So 12% is 765,748. And 16% is 1,02997. So it did change a little bit, but here again, um, Marcia, if we want to take a vote on this, um, either by doing it as a percentage of whatever our budget is, or if we want to say a specific dollar amount, because this range is gonna be pretty close to where we are. If I take out, um, the $150,000 and move it down to the allocated amounts.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Roger.
So, um, so thank you, uh, thank you for your remembering and, uh, and your attention to this, Joyce. Uh, so, um, this would be, we have authorization from a prior vote, is it that we have authorization to just do the kind of exercise that you're doing now? So your question is to us, it's not that we're looking to create a number to ask to the voters, but rather you're asking what kind of, uh, housekeeping we want to do for this.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, because the, the purpose specifically says it's supposed to be funded between 12 and 16%.
Right.
So the question to the select board is, do you want to land 12% or do you want to go closer to 16%?
Okay, uh, great. I love that we had that language. I love that we're having this conversation, and I'm in favor of whatever the number for 12% is.
Okay, so Roger is for 12%. Um, can I just guess that the middle of the road 14 would be about 900,000?
I just took the 150,000 out of the operating budget, moved that down below, so that actually, you know what, let me, let me pop this up. Hang on just a second here. I'm gonna share my other screen, so you can see the workbook. How's this? All right, so now can you see my budget workbook?
Yes.
All right, so what I did is I took out the, uh, on the expenses for the capital equipment, uh, let's see. So I took this line right out here where it says culvert placements, I took that 150 out, because it will need to get moved down to this section down here, which is where we had those other articles that were in here, so I'll add the 150 down here at the bottom. So it's included in the total budget expenditures, but it's not included in the town expenditures. Um, and then what that does is it drops our total budget down to 12% um, of, over what it was last year. $700,000 is an increase. If I infuse 500,000 still, that puts our increase at 3.79%. And then if I look over here at the calculation for, um, the budget, here's our budget, current budget amount, 12% is now 747, and it's this big enough for you guys to see, I just have to think. Small thing. Um, 747, 16% is 996,014%. You asked, Marcia, it's right here, seven, or 872.
Okay.
All right, so those are, those are the numbers that you're kind of looking at, um, depending on where we finally land with that total budget.
Okay.
And that's always also, um, contingent upon what we want to do when we are infusing a certain amount, um, which we'll get to at the very end. So that's why I said I don't mind if we kind of wait right now and hold that answer until we get to the end and we're actually looking at the tax calculation rate, um, in the workbook.
Okay. Um, what's your pleasure? Roger's already said 12, uh. Priscilla, what do you want to do? Do you want to wait? Do you want to say 12, 14, or 16?
12.
12. Um, Mary?
Go with 12.
Pam?
12% of what?
The operating.
Of the extra $500,000 that we're putting in from the um, undesignated fund to beef up the reserve funds? Why, why are we doing 12% of that?
Joyce?
Yeah, I'm trying to find my purpose document. The purpose when this fund was created was that it was supposed to be funded at between 12 and 16% of the operating budget.
Right, and reserve funds are not operational money. They're savings accounts.
This doesn't have anything to do with a reserve fund.
Yeah, it does.
Understanding your question.
She's talking about the operational fund. It's like having enough money in your checking account to, um, withstand, you know, an unexpected expense. That's what this is about.
To keep the lights on.
She's talking about 12, 14, or 16% of that big operating budget.
But the, but the operating budget also includes putting money in reserve funds. Because if we take away the million dollars that's going into reserve funds, we're at about 5.4 million, and we should be squirreling away 12% of 5.4, not 6.4.
I, I don't, I don't agree with that analysis, but.
No, because the calcu- the, the purpose says you're supposed to calculate it based on the total operating budget. So the total operating budget, when I did this calculation that's shown on the screen, was at 6.375. That was the total operating budget.
Which includes?
That's the amount you're raising taxes for, for the operating budget.
But it also includes putting appropriations in reserve funds.
May I finish speaking, please? Part of what that operating budget is, is to take new tax money that is raised and to put it into the reserve funnies, funds. That is part of the operating budget. This has nothing to do with the current balances in the designated funds, whatever their restriction type is. This is, the, uh, purpose specifically says the town's operating budget without the monetary articles. So that's what I'm using for this calculation.
All right, I'm 12%.
Okay, and I'm 12%, so the decision at the moment is 12%. And I guess if we get to the bottom line and we look at tax numbers and people want to go up, I doubt they will, but we can certainly look at that. Stuart Richards, you want to make a comment?
Hi, Stuart Richards Norwich. I, I just, uh, tuned in late and, um, you know, a little bit confused on, uh, what the actual impact will be on taxpayers, and I wonder if that could be. what the actual impact will be on taxpayers, and I wonder if that could be clarified for.
Coming up.
We haven't gotten there yet.
Right.
For tho, for those of us who are not perhaps as knowledgeable as we should be, uh, it would be helpful to know what the anticipated budget increase will be, including reserve funds or any other funds, and how that would impact the, uh, the taxpayers of Norwich, so.
We're gonna get to that at the end, Stuart was coming right up. Um, and if you go through carefully this packet, I think you'll get all the answers that you need, but we are still having to look at the tax, uh, impact.
When, when will that, Marsha, when will that happen? Will that happen?
Supposed to finish this by eight o'clock, so it's gonna be imminent.
Great, thanks, thanks for your, uh, thanks for your help.
Joyce?
Okay, so I'm gonna jump through capital plan, I just gave you new snapshots, um, because a couple of these changed with the new budget assumptions. Um, so nothing specific that I feel like I need to talk about there, but I do want to give you that information again, so you can see the ins and the outs. Um, here's the allocations.
Joyce, we're not seeing your, your slide deck right now.
Oh, what are you seeing?
Just the, uh, the boxes, the faceboxes.
The faceboxes, where did?
Yes, get rid of them, put on your presentation.
Alright, let's try back on here, um, question and answer. Guess I didn't get the right screen when I went back to share from looking at the budget. Okay, so, um, alright, back up, so we were here, capital planning. So capital planning, um, just these two screens for the capital fund, uh, balances again, and the allocations, and then we're gonna jump to the tax rate, so. So, um, I gave you a preview of the revenue, um, portion, and I did put the whole portion of the draft in the packet so that you could see this because we hadn't talked about revenue streams yet, but this was just kind of the summary. Um, one new item that we will have starting in twenty-four is that opioid settlement. We received our first payment in July of, of this year. Um, so that will continue for the next, I forget how many years, five years at least. Um, and so the FY twenty-five amount is expected to be three thousand dollars. That's what increased this miscellaneous revenue line, it was, uh, fifty-five, uh, five hundred and fifty before that. And then you can also see that right now I'm, uh, putting surplus money of five hundred in there, which was the assumption for the presentation we're doing tonight. Um, and then I also did, um, two tax rate, um, previews for you. This first one is, um, using the grand list and the education rates from April first, which was the most recent that we have. Um, and then this also used that assumption of a surplus infusion of five hundred thousand dollars. And so you can see that this is what our tax rates look like for FY twenty-five compared to FY twenty-four. And then here is the breakdown of various rates, um, that you're used to looking at FY twenty-five versus FY twenty-four, and you can see the change by each line item. Um, so this will change a little bit, ba, based on what we use for an infusion amount and the changes that we made tonight. Um, this one, I actually thought, okay, let's take a look if we did seven hundred thousand, because there was a conversation last year, or last week about maybe doing seven hundred instead of five hundred. So what does it look like if we did seven hundred, and you can see that brings us brought down to two point seven seven percent increase. Um, and here's the breakdown of your tax rates and your change. And again, what your total rates would be. So, then, um, I just had the list of the questions, and we have all of these questions answered. Um, if I jump down to the bottom one, um, we're gonna, I'm gonna calculate twelve percent for that one, and then what we want to talk about now is the amount of the surplus to be used to buy down the rate. Um, and then, so I'm gonna switch over and put my workbook up. Um, see if I can get to the right screen this time. Alright, now do you see the workbook again?
No.
Oh, no.
Yes, I see it.
Is that the workbook?
The workbook?
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes?
Yes, working V V five.
Okay. Alright, so we're looking at the expenses right now. And you can see that with the changes we made now, we started out at twelve, uh, twelve point fifteen percent. Twelve point four five percent. So with the changes that we just made now, we are at twelve point eight four percent. Um, and I'm gonna have to insert in here, um, a line, this will be that hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the, um, culverts. Okay, so I'll pretty that up, but that's where that would show, so it's in this bottom section, which is where all of the other monetary articles are, so that the townsfolk can see, okay, this is the amount that we have. If they say, no, we're not gonna do this article, then they're automatically saying, no, we're not gonna do this vote if you put those in one article. Um, and last, not last year, two years ago, you had some articles that included the creation of the fund and the funding at the same time, and then there was other articles that they were separate, so it'll be up to the select board to figure out how to do that, but this would be the dollar now that you would be asking for that initial funding. Um, I would also need to do the same with the, um, new, um, roadways and pedestrian safety fund would be the same thing. Um, that that would be brought down here, um, but I didn't have any questions on that item, so I think that that would just kind of stand as it was. Um, so then if I look at the very bottom line here, you can see right now I've got five hundred thousand, or yeah, five hundred thousand infused in here. And if I look over the tax calculation rate, this is what we're all used to looking at. Um, here's the school rates and the grand list information that is, was provided when we did the new rates in July. Um, and that here is the information that we're looking at on the other screen. Um, so we're looking at FY twenty-five right now, the tax rate for the budget without the articles is at sixty-two cents. The monetary articles is six cents, and the total town expecters or expenditures is sixty-eight cents. And this is per hundred. Um, offsetting revenues are totaling here. And you can see that that includes the five hundred, and here is our calculation of the tax rates by height of tax. So the question would be, is if I change the, um, infusion amount to seven hundred, what does that now do? Or if anybody's even interested in that, so if I change it to seven hundred thousand, this gives us what would be a flat budget increase. So if I look back at the tax calculations, then that pushes us back, you can see we're now at seven thousand here. So we've got actually a overall decrease in our, our town budget, our fifty-nine cents versus sixty cents, so basically flat. Um, and you can see that again on the bottom.
Okay. Pam, did you have a question before we start a, a straw poll?
Yeah, I'm confused about these numbers, and you know, we're in the throes of a reappraisal, so our grand list will drastically change. Um, we only impact the town tax, the municipal tax, we, we have nothing to say about the school tax that comes from the state. So I'm not sure why we would assume that it'd be similar to last year, it's probably gonna be drastically higher. So I, I just think it's premature to talk about how, what we're doing impacts the tax rate. And I also think that this, uh, discussion about what we put in here to buy down the tax rate is something that we should be talking to the voters about in January when we have the discussion about the surplus. How would they like to see that handled?
Thank you, Roger.
Um, Joyce, uh, I know that this is, uh, in all of the extensive documents, which I appreciate, but I'm wondering for the sake of the straw poll, um, what is the total surplus amount that we, um, are working with now, and then what do you anticipate being that total surplus amount, uh, uh, this year? I know that we don't have the audit, so like, what do we know now, and then what do we anticipate in terms of the total surplus?
Well, I actually just got the audit.
Oh, congratulations.
So I just started looking at, uh, no, I got it Tuesday, today's Wednesday, so I just started looking at it. And looking at it quickly, we're still looking at that one point eight, there's no big swings to that. So the surplus is looking like it's one point eight right now, at the end, twenty-three.
So we have one point, uh, eight, and so you're looking, we're, we're having a conversation about effectively half of that, is that right? Like, no, not even?
No.
Oh, well, and we don't have to have a decision about the total amount tonight, we're just looking to say, okay, how much of the surplus do we want to propose to the voters and put into the operating budget? Um, to help keep that tax or increase flat, or, you know, that's what we're looking at.
So I, I guess I'm asking these questions because even, even as we look to allocate this, this surplus, there are still plenty of surplus, there's still, uh, plenty, there's still money in that one point eight that will be unrestricted, undesigned, right?
Right, and you can think of it kind of like, um, remember the, uh, surplus screen that I showed you?
Right.
We had seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, that was our surplus at the end of twenty-two.
Right.
Um, so then we add this onto it, so if you're looking at spending the twenty-two surplus, that's pretty close to seven hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Um, without even touching what we had this year, but, but this year, I mean, twenty-three surplus.
Right, so I, I think, so I'll just say to answer the, the straw poll that Marshall will soon ask, um, will be that, um, look like materially, there's still material much surplus left even after a conversation of five hundred versus seven hundred thousand dollars. And so the only thing that I would ask town staff to do with that seven hundred thousand dollars is to build, uh, ask us a co, ask for a narrative, like, right, so like, I think the conversation has been things that had been, you know, previously neglected, we've had this once in a generation, um, money that's provided the surplus, and as a result, we have shored up our capital expenditures. And so I, I'm in favor less in talking about it as buying down a rate and more in talking about it as we are making allocations in these areas, so, so I am fine with seven hundred thousand dollars, especially after looking at the tax rate implications. I am, would just like next week to sort of have more of a listing about what that narrative would look like for town meeting. Um, uh, so what, what is a part of the seven hundred thousand, um, you know, I would like to see it a little bit. Um, I would like to see it look a little bit itemized, not because I want to eliminate items or add items, but because I think that is good for the work. So, so we have plenty of surplus that we could have, you know, life-changing conversations about, but we should use seven hundred thousand, and we should just begin to itemize, um, matters for that, uh, for the, for the, for that idea of catching up with, with capital allocations. Does that make sense? That was long-winded.
Yeah.
So, so, so yes, I'm in favor of seven hundred thousand dollars with the support that, with the caveat that you'll provide, um, um, some language and descriptive information for this board at the subsequent meeting.
And I, I think what we're gonna do is talk about surplus next time, and we can actually talk about it tonight potentially, how we want to talk to, um, the voters in January about it, but I sort of think of it as, we got one point eight million. The genesis of seven hundred thousand was just because we didn't spend seven hundred thousand dollars over the past prior years. And one point one, the genesis was originally ARPA, which then paid off salaries, which then became a benefit. And so that amount of money, I think we talked to the voters about, okay, after we've made some decisions, you know, hey, we're thinking this is good, these kinds of things. And we're recommending that, what do you think? And have that conversation.
So, Marsha, just to, just to be clear, what I'm hearing is there's the seven hundred thousand dollars which we're talking about for this budget season, but you're saying, you're suggesting that the other funds for the surplus is more, or is more the conversation with the voters? Is that what I'm hearing? Cause I, that sounds right to me, if that's what I'm hearing.
That's what I'm hearing, that's what I'm saying.
So the seven hundred thousand dollars, which I'm saying, uh, I seek like a narrative and itemization on, like, we should get that for us, for our work, for this budget season, but the other, the other hundreds of thousands of dollars is the narrative building with our community, not the seven hundred thousand.
Right.
I like that, that's great.
Okay, so the question then for everybody is five hundred thousand or seven hundred thousand? Priscilla, what do you think?
I thought I was clear until you and Roger got going, but now I feel muddled, but also I'm gonna go back to where I was initially, which is I looked at the tax rates and went, and, uh, we have no control over the school, and I'm very concerned about that, so I had been at five hundred before I went through Joyce's deck, and I'm now at seven hundred. But yes, we need to have a lot of conversations with the voters, but I'd like to try to buy, I'd recommend buying down at seven hundred thousand.
Okay. Uh, Mary?
I'm also in favor of seven hundred thousand, and I think the narrative is, could be simple and compelling.
Thank you. Pam, five hundred or seven hundred?
I think I'm gonna abstain on this, I'd like to hear from the voters.
Okay.
I'd also like to know when we might see that audit.
Uh, well, like I said, I just got it yesterday, so I just started looking at it today. So hopefully very soon. Has to be very soon, because it's gotta be before I end my contract, so it's imminent, I'm working on it.
Um, and I, I'll go with seven hundred thousand, so the decision is to buy down the tax rate with seven hundred thousand dollars. Okay, thank you all. Joyce, is there anything else that we need to decide tonight, or is this?
No, that's everything that I need, um, my only question is, who is creating the itemized list of how this money is being infused? Do you want information on the increases in the capital, or are, are you looking for me to do that for you? Um, and is that something you wanted in the packet for next week?
You mean the decisions that we just took?
No, 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 the decisions we just took, I'm good with that, but Roger had said that he would like to see some type of an itemization of how the infusion of the seven hundred thousand dollars is helping to fund the capital projects or whatever while we're keeping the budget low.
I don't know, I, I would turn to Brennan to say, you know, you know, time crunches that we've got.
I, I'm unclear exactly what we're, what we're trying to narrate as well.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, imagine this conversation. Hi, Roger, nice to see you, how's the select board? I'm so sorry, how much, how, what, like, what are you buying down this year? I'd be like, we're doing an infusion of cash, cash from the surplus, like, what are we getting that we didn't have before? Be like, hmm, a bunch of stuff, we're funding reserve funds, like, so, you know, I'm, I can do, I, I'm certainly capable of doing the work that I'm asking you to do, but, um, I would, I would like, I think it has the added value of if it's presented to us, all five of us can say, yes, absolutely, like, that is the narrative, that is the budget conversation, that is what we take to the streets, that is how we garner support from our community. Does that make sense?
Well, well, I think what your an, your answer there is, well, your tax rate is going to be two point, whatever number that was, Joyce, two point seven percent, was that the seven hundred thousand? Whereas if we had not infused that seven hundred thousand dollars into the budget that has been presented, your tax rate would be significantly higher. Um, I mean, we can show the workbook of this is where there were infusions of money into the capital expense lines that have been underfunded, and that our operating budget is relatively flat. But I don't, I, I'm not sure we can go through and say this is where seven hundred thousand dollars went. It's really, it's, it's buying down a tax rate that would be higher because the percentage of increase would be much higher.
Really kind of throwing money at the issue.
But do you really want, do you want to talk to your community, and do you really think it's accurate to say that we're, we're throwing surplus money at, um, our, at our expenditures?
We're saying that we agreed that we had this much of expenditures, but rather than consider that seven hundred thousand dollars a, a surplus that we would do something else with, we were putting it towards those expenditures, and thus having to ask for fewer funds in taxes from our community. we were putting it towards those expenditures and thus having to ask for fewer funds in taxes from our community.
But couldn't you just, people couldn't say, like, why couldn't you do like actual budgeting and control your expenditures? Like, do you see, do you see the conversation?
Yeah, I do.
I'm fine. I'm capable, I'm capable of doing this work, right? Like, that's, that's the job. But I'm just saying it would be nice if we all shared, you know, that narrative.
Well, we listened to our, our department. Mary, do you have something to offer for this?
Yeah, just thinking in the initial slide decks that Joyce presented, I, what I, what I found most compelling was the, the graphs that just showed the underfunding of the reserve funds. And I think in terms of a, a narrative, you know, there is talking to people on the street, but there's also the, the slide deck that we're going to have at town meeting. And I think that just showing that, you know, there was that underfunding for several years, and now we're trying to get caught up. And I think that in itself could be part of a narrative without going line by line, saying, well, we did this here and we did this there. Just that graphical information enough would be enough for me to, you know, kind of put, put it together.
And that's probably more true in terms of explaining.
Well, I mean, it's just sort of a more, you know, it's more of an elevated view rather than line by line. Line by line, people get lost, I think. So, but I, I think we're good. I think we could, you know, figure out the narrative when we get a little closer to the warrant and the meeting and so forth.
So is that all right, Roger? We'll, we'll work on that as we prepare for the meeting. And in fact, we may be doing some of that as we prepare for our discussions in January with, with folks.
Yeah, I, I don't think what I'm asking for is that complicated. Like, I'm just gonna do it myself in the absence of anybody wanting to do it. Like, the people that we pay to do it. But I, I'm just saying it, like, it, it makes, it makes sense to see, you know, how our services going to change or like how our purchases going to be made as a result of, you know, this infusion. You know, the first question I would ask as a, as a taxpayer is like, well, what's going to happen when there isn't a surplus? So you're just going to buy it down every year? I guess then the argument is like, no, this, this ensures that we don't have to do that. We're back on track. But that itself is a narrative, right? Fine, we're good.
We're, we're fine. All right. Thank you very much, Joyce. That was excellent. And I'm amazed that we got through it in the time. So.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate having all the questions ahead of time because that really helped a lot. So, yeah.
I, I was just going to add, so, so again, thank you very much to Joyce for that very sophisticated workbook that she's created. And I think we have what we need right now, Joyce, to come back with basically the final budget, which I don't think should take us another hour and a half next week. I certainly hope not. And that would just be kind of a final look with the presentation and then asking the, the select board to ratify that as the final that will go into the, into the town meeting. And then the other discussions that we're going to have about a narrative and about the, the surplus funds that are not being infused are going to be for a future meeting prior to the articles being created for that meeting. So, does that seem right to everyone?
Goes to me.
Excellent.
What do you? Everybody okay? All right. That concludes the budget session for this evening. We'll move on. And thank you, Joyce, very much. And if Barry's on here, yes, she is. Thank you, Barry. All right, next is item number two, Kentucky versus Town of Norwich. This is an executive session. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion from the most current motion sheet.
Thank you.
Okay. I move to find that premature general public knowledge of privileged attorney-client communications would clearly place the public body or a person involved at a substantial disadvantage pursuant to one VSA Section three thirteen A one, including by revealing privileged information and waiving attorney-client privilege.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Anyone? Priscilla, thank you very much. I'll call the question. You can raise your hands or whatever. Roger?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Marsha, yes, unanimous. Do we have a second motion?
I move to enter executive session under one VSA Section three thirteen A one E to discuss pending civil litigation to which the public body is a party and to invite town council and the town manager.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Priscilla. Roger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Marsha, yes. It's unanimous. At eight twenty seven, we are in executive session.
Okay, so I'm gonna stop the recording and I'm gonna move everyone who is still on the Zoom into the waiting room until the executive session ends at this point.
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Marsha, yes, unanimous. We are in public session at eight forty eight PM. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve the form of the settlement agreement and the form of the stipulation regarding dismissal of the Katokee litigation as recommended by legal counsel for the town.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Pam Smith. Priscilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Marsha, yes, unanimous. Do we have a second motion?
I move to authorize the chair to execute the approval form of the settlement agreement.
May, friendly correction, do you, did you mean to say approval or approved form?
Um. Hang on a minute. Approved form. So I move to authorize the chair to execute the approved form of the settlement agreement.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Pam Smith. Priscilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone. All right.
Everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Item three. Executive session to receive, oh, an executive session to receive confidential attorney-client communications. Do we have a motion?
Yes, let's see. I move to find that premature general public knowledge of privileged attorney-client communication would clearly place the public body or a person involved at a substantial disadvantage pursuant to one VSA Section three thirteen A one, including by revealing privileged information and waiving attorney-client privilege.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Priscilla. All right, call the question. Priscilla?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Marsha, yes, unanimous. Do we have a second motion?
Let's see. I move to enter executive session under one VSA Section three thirteen A one F to receive confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the body and to invite town council and the town manager.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Priscilla. Call the question, Priscilla?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Marsha, yes, unanimous. We are in executive session at eight fifty one PM.
All right. Once again, I'm gonna move folks that are still in the meeting but are not involved in the executive session back into the waiting.
No.
Yeah, there's still one in the waiting room that's been there without a full name, so they've been there the whole day.
Oh, okay.
I moved to enter public session.
Thank you, Roger. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mary. Pam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Marsha, yes, it's unanimous. We're in public session at ten PM exactly. All right. Now it is time for public comments for any items which were not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public who wants to make a comment? All right, seeing none. I had put on here that we could have a budget, budget continuation discussion if necessary. I don't think that we need that for the discussion that we had tonight. In terms of planning for January twenty twenty four session, I definitely want to do that. I'm not sure I'm up for it tonight. How does everybody else feel about it?
Not up, not up for it tonight.
Okay.
They're tired.
No, I think we've done enough.
Okay. In that event, seeing nothing else on for business for this evening, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Priscilla. All right, Pam, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Marsha, yes, it's unanimous, and we are adjourned at ten oh one PM. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.